The next item of business will be Animal Services, Mr. David Wether.
Good morning, Board. Appreciate y'all hearing this.
What's going on everybody else?
A couple things I wanted to bring up. One of them was, I sat down with some of my staff and the attorney and we would like to put forth some more policies and procedures and change a few things that we'd like to get the Board's approval on this. I don't know that there's really any way of not reading all of them. I was just gonna touch on a couple of them, but it won't take but just a few minutes. The one, basically, that's really not changed a whole lot is the volunteer providing services for the department. She'll submit an application and go through the customary screening process used for county volunteers. That is something that's been going on through Ms. Jackman, through the HR. On the second paragraph, as you can see, it says, "The department by and through, this department director may adopt additional questions and criteria for volunteer screening and selection that are related to needs or resources of the department." I'd like to touch on that just a minute. Naturally, we want what's best for the animals out there. And we want, if we have questions that are added to the process of the volunteers, meaning that they've had some kind of background dealing with animals and stuff like that, there again, that would help us in our department. Right here, in the other one, it says, "Summation of Volunteer..."
If you don't mind here. The first part, I don't have a problem with. The second part here where it says, "The department may also adopt additional procedures related to volunteer services that are not included in these policies, that are related to the needs or resources of the department." I think we need to add in there somewhere in our language with Board approval. I don't want to just arbitrarily be able to make decisions or make changes without notifying us or coming through us, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Which I know you don't, but I'm just being polite.
And that's why I bring it up. Okay? And then down here, " Submission of volunteer application and going through volunteer screening process does not guarantee that a person will be accepted as a volunteer for the department." And that's with any department. I mean, naturally, it's up to the director or if whoever you want to volunteer. I mean, just because you went through the drug screening, the background check and stuff, I feel like that you also have to be somebody that can get along with others and capable of... Right, right. An acceptance of the volunteer for a department will be the decision of the department director, which what I was just saying then. And then on the second page, it was, "Submit application will be notified whether they have been accepted as a volunteer." Right now, as y'all know too, I've told some of y'all and I've talked to several people, our volunteer program right now, we've had two that we have accepted, which have not been able to help us in quite a while now. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that right now, we have, we will be taking more volunteers on. It's gonna take a little bit. I've had a man that November 30th put in his resignation. That was his last day.
An employee.
Right. And so what we have now with the holidays, with us being employee down and stuff, we do not have the manpower to put somebody with a volunteer at this time. In the future, I am gonna have more volunteers out after they go through, like I was reading before, the screening and stuff like that. But some, some people are bothered by that decision, but they've got to understand, you've got to have an employee, whatever volunteer you have out there. And if you just barely have enough to run your department, you don't really have time for volunteer right now. I'm not saying we won't have volunteers in the future. We will. We've had different situations come about here lately. I know a lot of y'all have heard about the dog attacks we had a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I've had to get my vet that was on staff that's really not even in her duty to bring a truck out. I mean, we all work the night across at night. But we're doing a lot of work. Everybody stepping up to the plate on that. So, "The services of the volunteer may include, but not be limited, socialization of dogs..." socialization, I'm sorry, "of dogs, cats, different testing, walking dogs and cats, cleaning of kennels and in play yards. The department director has authority to make determination of which volunteer services needed at any particular time. The department will work, incorporate with accepted volunteers to acquire services that will determine what's needed. No volunteer or member of the public, including rescue groups, will be allowed to access the dog, cat kennels unless under supervision of department employees." Right. And I definitely would like to touch on that. I mean, it's, it's something that should have been happening for a long time now. And you run into all kinds of risks letting any public go down there. Right now, we have probably, well, we still have four of the dogs that were involved in that attack a couple of weeks ago. I definitely do not want the public to be able to access our kennels at any time without checking in or getting one of our employees down there with. Okay.
I don't know if anybody watched the local news, but there was a thing last night about apparently they broke up a dog fighting ring or suspected dog fighting ring in Plutton County. They put the dogs, took them all to the kennel. Somebody broke into the kennel and stole the dog, or stole part of the dog. So, I mean, that's, you know, that kind of goes along with this. All my friends access to them.
And we, we have had that happen here too. We picked dogs up and the next day they come out and get them out, either send a friend over and somebody attacked the kennel without us seeing or something. So, and now we have got signs, the road departments helped us with the signage out front that says, "At all persons should check in off of rescue group, public invite." So, we've got two of them. Kennels will be locked at all times. They have to come to us before they get in.
Are there any questions for David on these proposed changes, policies and procedures? Ms. Cooper?
If a volunteer is rejected, will they be given a reason why they were rejected? Or just told out?
It doesn't necessarily mean anybody will be rejected.
Right.
You can only handle so many.
Well, I understand, but if you are rejected, say, I put in my application, I love animals. You'll tell me why I'm rejected so I can maybe correct that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to point out to the Board too, this came about at working on a different situation. We discovered that some of the volunteers, there were people doing some volunteering work out there that had not completed the screening process.
Right.
To, to get this all set and, and for the Board approval. It was clear that they had to finish the screening process and actually be appointed by the...
Thank you for touching on that. Other thing, do we have any more questions on that?
Yeah, I think we need to have a motion to announce these policies.
You had, you had public comment, some comments person, and anybody else who else?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you out. I was gonna let him do his report. Okay. Does anyone have any comments on the policies and procedures?
Just a question. Is it your opinion that a employee has to be standing right next to a volunteer, one of the back of the animal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Unless it's saying it's a trusted employee that would walk back, can walk back to them.
A trusted employee?
A trusted volunteer.
Well, it really depends. Let them get activated with the department and the rules and guidelines. I'm not saying that one's got to be right next to him at all times. But to start out with, yes, we do have to have supervision of, from the employee to our volunteers.
Ms. Taffey, do you have a comment?
Yeah.
I have a comment. I have to say to comment back to what Ms. Terry said. Both definitely, I personally wouldn't want a volunteer getting eaten up on a birthday of him being a volunteer because he didn't know. So, I would say yes.
Do you want to bring it up here?
Yeah.
Open the doors.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mary Tate and I live on Southeast 60th Street in Morriston. I'm here this morning to address the Board in relation to the proposed policies and procedures which have been submitted by Leavy County Animal Services Department on today's agenda. First, I would like to draw the Board's attention to the recent court case Fancy Cats Rescue Team, Inc. versus Crenson in the United States District Court of Maryland. In that case, Maryland U.S. District Judge James Breder ruled that opportunity to serve as a volunteer or partner with a government organization as a rescuer is a constitutionally protected benefit and that volunteers and rescuers have the right to exercise constitutionally protected free speech, free of a state actor's retaliatory adverse act. With that in mind, I would like to point out that this proposed policy contains no time parameters for acceptance or rejection of a volunteer application. I would suggest to the Board that fourteen days is a reasonable time in which to accept or reject an application and that the time parameters should be a part of the written policy. Volunteer applications should be evaluated uniformly and consistently. For what lawful reason may the director reject an application? The proposed policy contains no job descriptions nor eligibility requirements. In order to assure that decisions are not arbitrary, discriminatory or retaliatory, any additional questions and/or criteria for volunteer screening and selection developed by the department should be made part of the written policy and approved by this Board. Rejection of any application should be made in writing and should expressly state the reason for rejection. In order to provide due process, the Board, the policy should include a procedure to appeal the decision of the department director. If rejected applicants would appeal to this Board, the policy should say so. Additionally, this proposed policy does not address the issue of photographs and/or video taken by volunteers or private citizens at Leavy County Animal Services. There is currently a sign displayed in front of the facility which states, "Absolutely no cameras are allowed." I believe that policy violates constitutional law. Banning photography and video in public areas of the shelter limits free speech. See Animal Legal Defense Fund versus Honor. The taking of a photograph or video is included with the First Amendment's guarantee of speech and press rights as a corollary of the right to disseminate the resulting recording. ACLU versus Alvarez. As the ACLU has correctly argued, videotaping and capturing images of poor shelter conditions or neglected animals are indistinguishable from commenting or speaking out of such conditions. Volunteers, rescuers and members of the public have a right to document things they believe are improper. They can also take photographs and videotape to assist in finding animals' homes. Therefore, I am asking the Board to send the proposed policy back to Animal Services for appropriate revision and direct the county attorney to research First Amendment and constitutional issues in order to assure that Leavy County's photo policies are brought into compliance with federal law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll throw you a mic.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, comments?
Mr. David?
Yes.
What case you realize y'all have out there? Case of two or three?
Most of them are three.
Three? Y'all have lots of cases?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Nobody has that extra P, but it's four.
Right. That boy isn't one of their own. What's it supposed to have to do? We will, um... Some of the stuff that Chris Tate was discussing, I will look into. Something that we have been looking into, being an attorney. There's, in my opinion, several reasons why you, you wouldn't... Won't somebody just down there take a picture?
Don't actually... Go ahead. First of all, it's inside of the land that we have inmates out there. Where I'm at, you got to look out for them too.
Yes.
Now, to move on from there and go back to why we're actually here, you're asking us to, to adopt, from adoption, personnel policies and procedures for volunteer program in general, in general public kennel access, correct?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
The change for changes.
Changes, obviously. Yes, with the changes, that was noted with the Board approval. And who was the other one that ended up? Which part was that on the second page?
I didn't know what on the second page.
It was just the first page.
No.
The one that the Chair mentioned.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, taken by Commissioner Jordan. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wade?
Other than what you said, with the, the changes having to be brought back to the Chair, what was the second one?
I, I don't... There wasn't a second one.
Okay.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, David, you got a report for us?
Yes, sir. We talked about doing a quarterly report. This would be my second one. The next will be in January. Basically, in August, the amount of animals we picked up totally was a hundred and ninety-seven. And we had a hundred and six dogs, ninety-one cats. We had twelve claimed, twenty adopted, fifty-six rescued and fourteen euthanized. That's the dogs. The cats, we had ninety-one picked up. We had none claimed, fifteen adopted, seventeen rescued and fifty-nine euthanized. September, we had a hundred and seventeen animals total picked up. Out of that, on the dogs, we had four euthanized for the whole month of September. Cats, twenty-two. And gradually, these numbers are decreasing. Naturally, you're going, your number with cats is gonna be a lot higher than they are with dogs. I think anytime you can get in sixty-three dogs and only euthanize four, I think we came along. October, seventy-seven dogs, eight were euthanized that month. And there were a hundred and seventy-nine dogs total picked up.
A hundred and seventy-nine animals.
Animals, I'm sorry. And there, then we have the next page, kind of what our vet's been doing a little bit. In July, we, we microchipped sixty-two animals. So, that's sixty-two animals that come in our kennel and we run our scanner across and reunite with their owner. We gave out fifty-four rabies shots. We spayed thirty-one and we neutered twenty-nine. Come up to August, we spayed forty-two. We ended up neutering fifty-one, microchipped eighty-four. And the rabies shots were fifty. Then we had the next month, September, and we spayed nineteen, neutered twenty-nine, microchipped forty-three and rabies forty-seven. There's another thing that I want to touch on a little bit and I will bring him back, hopefully within the next board meeting or the next. We have been working with LEAF, which is a nonprofit organization that's been helping us through another gentleman that has come and sat down and had a meeting with me and LEAF and order for him to, he's been giving us money for vaccinations. I think he upped it from two-hundred to four-hundred now this, following this year. Every month, they're helping us with rabies shots and stuff like that. We have got a verbal commitment of ten thousand dollars donated to build a new cat. It's really, and like I said, I'll probably have him in, within the next couple of board meetings and once we get started, it will be built in-house from the county pro department. Anybody have any questions on anything?
How much is your microchip, David? I must have gotten some...
Well, we're looking into that now. They can be up to eight dollars a piece. We found them as low as, what, a little less than four, three ninety?
Three ninety-nine.
So, we're fixing to order some because we just went through what we've had.
Yeah. Same, same microchip, dog or cat?
Right, right. But I'm telling you, it's gonna save you a lot.
I mean, you have a return out of microchip, haven't you?
Um, not yet, not too many. We get them occasionally, maybe, maybe three or four a week. Probably three or four a month, I'd say. When you, yeah.
But you're gonna...
It's gonna get more and more. The more we keep microchipping these animals, the more we get them in and they'll be able to be turned back to their owner.
And then you don't know about it.
And before, when we was picking animals up and we were charging you twenty-five dollars to go and get your animal, now you, you still pay your twenty-five dollars, but the dog has a microchip by your choice. In other words, we say, hey, but the microchip presented the way you're paying it. And it's paid for a microchip. Perfect. Okay? Thank you.
There's a dog taking out another dog today.
Yes, sir.
And you and your staff, I clean. Y'all got that right.
Appreciate that.
Keep the place that clean with as many dogs and cats you have going through there, it's okay to help y'all. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, David. Emergency Management, John Diamond. Thank you.
Just something really short and quick that I'd like to get addressed. We're on a home run stretch for the five-year plan update. And part of that process is all that is, we have a project list with score by rank in the package right there. You'll see some of the rankings and the scores in there. There's some of them say Leavy County. There's a couple of them on there that I need to get addressed whether we want to leave them on there, take them off, change it, add something to it that the county's concerned about right there. Of course, the mitigation public outreach, which you can see on number fifteen. That one, of course, should stay on there. And then we've got that twenty-two down there where it says County Route 335 roadway improvement. I talked to Casey and he said he doesn't think there's anything else left to do on that route right there. So, that one, you know, most definitely needs to come off of there. But basically, I didn't want to take anything off, change or delete or add anything without getting approval from you guys as far as what the county's concerned with, you know, what I'm gonna do. The eight-hundred megahertz tower, the Cedar Key one, and the upgrade to the Williston one, which is one and done in the ranking right there. I guess being as the county has their own radio system and all that stuff now, I think the Sheriff's Department's the only one that utilizes an eight-hundred. Do we want to leave those on there? Do we want to change gears, take those off? Or do we want to, you know, like you said, leave them on there? Or, you know, because one of the other things I thought about maybe adding to it, and I got my Shinley on, and Shinley has made a recommendation too, too, is the, the English project that y'all have going on currently right now, we might want to throw that, add that to this. And then there's probably, you know, potential against some addition. I do, but probably realistically, score or rank a lot higher when it goes back for scoring than these other two. But it's entirely up to draw a play what we're going to do.
Mr. Sheriff, I know this is kind of catching you out of left field. Are the improvements to the eight-hundred megahertz system in Cedar Key and Williston still permanent? Or are there's...
The Williston is definitely permanent.
Okay.
Cedar Key, we don't have many problems, but we still have that dead area. I've been to the, up to the legislative committee meetings and met with our legislators, both locally and in Tallahassee, and they continue to work with the State Law Enforcement Radio Board to try to do something with this million-dollar project. A life of one of my deputies is...
Way more than a million dollars.
More than that.
And that was one of the things that, you know, that concerned me when it, because both of those projects, and I don't know how they got on there originally and all that. The last time this list was actually even looked at was like January of last year. It, being as that's a state system, you know, that's something that they have to maintain and they have to do right there. But, you know, it might be something that the county may want to put their own, you know, their own tower or whatever right there and throw the state's equipment on or whatever. The state's gonna have to obviously maintain it because it's part of their systems that are failing them, you know?
And I remember under the Williston area, that they were, their closest tower of what they was looking at was somewhere on Tangee Prairie or close to Tangee Prairie. They was looking to tie and make a lane there to cover that, cover that area of Williston. And, and they're, that's been, what, six, seven hundred years ago?
I think that got ruled out, but that, that will not work. We're gonna have to have a tower in the east side of the county somewhere, up in that east Williston area. But that, you know, that's one of our highest crime areas, so. You know, it's a dangerous situation. As we all know, you know, communication has been a problem as long as I've been around, no matter what system. But this is really, it's a, it's a dangerous matter. And I've done about all I can do to try to get assistance. In fact, probably should ask this Board. This may be the proper time for y'all to chime in with a letter, letter to our legislative boards.
Hey, come on up here. We'll take care of that.
Well, I think maybe John can add that to what he's done. But if y'all would support that cause with a letter, that might help.
Mr. Sheriff, I make a motion to hear it on the end of that.
I think...
Motion to hear it on agenda by Commissioner Stevens, taken by Commissioner Jordan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chris Harris. Sheriff, go where you're with. Letters are way cheaper than, uh...
I would like to make a formal request of the Board to support us and with a letter to Representative Stone and Senator Dean and to the SLURs Board itself, State Law Enforcement Radio Board, expressing what we've already expressed to them, we need four a tower in East Leavy County.
I'll make a motion and send the letter under question.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is any input?
The night piece meeting, there was a pleasant discussion by Cedar Key Chief, that he has problems with his body communications down there. He's vagrant. She doesn't see the pages. But you're saying there's no problems there with the bird?
Well, I mean, two different races. Yes, two different, yeah, periodically, we may have a problem, but we don't have the problem in Cedar Key like we do with these Williston, you know, over in there.
Thanks, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sheriff.
Hello, Lee.
Hello, I'm always there or somewhere.
I guess my question, John, is who rank, who rank these things?
There's a, there's actually a part of the local mitigation strategy working group of people that come in and that, that actual working group is comprised, comprised of, usually have a primary from a municipality and a backup, an assistant or whatever that comes in from a municipality and then it's made up of various county department heads that come in there. So, they all take it and they put them all on this list and then they'll all score them on these scoring sheets. Once they score them, then that's, you know, that's how they get categorized. Then they go to the state level and all that stuff there and they get compiled with the rest of them and they start prioritizing them from there. But, you know, my biggest concern with it, you know, when we started this five-year update for LMS plan we were looking at, I was trying to get it done and get it completed before we submit that plan at the end of December. So, you know, and I really would like to add that English project that I missed and put it in and have them go ahead and rescore that. And it's, you know, like I said, if, if you want to leave the, I mean, we can naturally leave them all on there. It's entirely up to y'all what you want to do. The Cedar Key Tower, I mean, if you're gonna write a letter or something like that and you want to address both the issues or something with it, but, you know, I don't know how the state would react to that there. They may react a lot better if you just do one, you know, more than the other. But I would, I would definitely need, like you said, the, you know, the Williston one on there. But the rest of them are pretty much either completed or, you know, they're just, you know, they're just normal activities that we do all the time. The firewise education and the mitigation public outreach, which we do all the time anyways. So, entirely, if you guys have, you want to handle it. Just like I said, I thought that it'd be right to bring it to y'all and let y'all make that decision on it instead of just going out there and slinging that stuff out there.
Is the Westwater project finally complete now?
As far as I'm, as far as I know, yes. And there, and most of these municipality ones that you're looking at, they have already been instructed during the last meeting to go back and take off what's completed as theirs. And like the volunteer fire rescue VHF communications and all that naked down, that's complete. You know, there's a bunch of them, quite a few, and it's gonna come off of there. But, and then they're gonna come up with some new ones or whatever to score for that. But I just want to make sure I've got the county portion that taking care of that so that doesn't slow us down as far as getting that, that stuff down before we get into December. I just wanna make sure I got the county portion done, taking care of that, so that doesn't slow us down as far as getting that, uh, that stuff done before we get into December.
Well, I think definitely, uh, if we add that English word to this, uh, list, uh, mitigation, would be a great idea. Do we need that form of motion, or can we do that just by consensus?
Is the list gonna come back to you as a final, or?
It's up to you whether you want it to come back.
If it comes back, you just give them that direction and?
Yeah, and it's, uh, I mean, the list we can submit with the plan, because that, usually those plans, when they go, they never pass on the first one anyway, so it'll come back, you know, and nobody ever, I mean, I haven't seen one yet that anybody's got done with, you know, first approval, the state's gonna send them back to the, hey, you need to dot this I process T or whatever right there, but usually by the second one, it's pretty much done, but, um, so we probably looking at a conference around February before it actually be finalized, finalized, so, I mean, we can update it and change it and do stuff like that, but I just wanted to get something, you know, set in stone or something when we submit this to them in December that way, so.
I'd like to see this English project added to this list, so I'll really be real about it.
Do you wanna make a motion and pick both of us?
So, a motion by Commissioner Rooks, saying by Commissioner Ross Meeks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. You want me to just read these two eight-hundred ones on here? Get that, y'all.
And, uh, and then obviously, whatever the, the municipalities come back with, that's already been completed, right, well, it will come on.
Correct, right. All right, well, God bless you, uh, you and your families and all that, have a Merry Christmas, I don't see y'all wherever you're in, but, uh, you, uh.
Brant it up!
See ya.
Merry Christmas.
Glad we just tell, say that here.
Um, Shilla, you said you'd go to the community, you said some of the, uh. Just in case. Presentation. Public safety.
Here we go. Going back to something Sheriff said about communications, that's a problem ever since he's been around, and that goes back to the two cans and the string.
And all I can tell you, Mr. Moody is older than I am.
Dang.
Listen to Kenyatta's response. Poor Johnson, Sheriff.
Good on him. Older than you? Oh, shit.
Okay, all right. Public safety is requesting approval from the board and Chairman's signature on the non-institutional Medicaid provider agreement fingerprint exemption form. This is part of our normal routine of our Medicaid program that continues to allow us to bill. These are one of the programs that we do not balance billings, this is what our ALS rate is a hundred ninety-five hours and the VLS rate's a hundred thirty-five hours, we cannot balance bill the difference. This is not as important as the, which we keep up on as a part of our normal. Ma- annual renewal has been safe, legal sufficiency from Mrs. Brown, and this time it does involve Chairman's signature. Chairman's signature.
Ms. Kim.
Mr. Chairman, who is the non-institutional Medicaid program?
Medicaid. I'm not sure I have any question.
What I mean is that, I mean, who is providing the services under Medicaid?
John, he was.
It's the people we transport.
The people we transport, patients we transport.
Medicaid pays for us to transport.
Thank you so much.
My finger brown on the right chair right here, they started off.
No, this is for the chairman.
Yeah, so, um.
Exactly. Um, next item on the agenda.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get a hand for that.
I would like you to approve.
Sorry. We have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, saying by Commissioner Ross Meeks, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I wouldn't let them go.
Tarp's getting heavy on it.
Just gonna reel in.
Next item on today's agenda is updating agreement at low cost involving American Tower Corporation. This is our Hay Farm and Williston Tower site, requesting the board's approval for the first amendment to the license agreement with American Tower Corporation, license contract number four, five, two, six, eight, nine, the American Tower site identified as Hay Farm in Williston, Florida. We had an antenna while we were doing our construction, they had to move to a different location on that tower site, and this is the update on that tower site, requesting the board's approval, Chairman's signature.
So we're just moving the antenna on the tower, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Is there any?
There's no cost, there's no cost to the county balloting.
There's a hay farm, man, hey, you can go. Right behind mine, I don't get it.
You getting bigger range, dude?
Yes.
So I hear a motion to, uh, question. Behind the house, it's not about my brother. You have a motion by Commissioner Rooks, saying by Commissioner Stevens, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Hey, is there a room this town for, uh, the sheriff's hay bunker?
We're, we're, if you'd like to me elaborate on that, we're currently working with, um, another vendor, county owns a piece of property right next to that tower site, so we're working on a agreement with the vendor to build, place a tower on it, so it'll be part of the revenue for Lea County. So that's one of the projects that we have in play right now, we're working on, so we'll do more, a couple more months, but as we've signed a five-year lease agreement with them, so we're moving now, so it doesn't come up on us and you have to go and start doing it. So with two years, that's what we're using now, we're working with a vendor, the wrecked tower and county property that we own, in exchange for the tower ships on the tower, so we're processing that, not budgeting.
Would we, um, uh, but, it's too early, well, it's just too early, yeah, I mean, and if we did the tower deal, would it be revenue, could we sell space to our?
All right, you have my vote.
I think I was off this one, I'm, I was, I was.
The answer would be no.
Short answer to a short story now.
I think all the Christmas cards, that move.
He didn't approach, don't worry about it.
Yeah, Bruce, you got hit for updating everyone here. I don't hear anymore. All right, Alice, you're up. Hey, Miss Alice, how are you?
Good.
Always good to see you. Has anybody ever said Ross Meeks in the building?
Any choose me, thank you.
Well, and he's already nervous, I guess.
Yeah, my first one, thank you. Well, my first item is a renewal of our existing air curtain incinerator application. Um, we've been doing this since two thousand nine, and this is the first time they've required the board to approve this application. Um, I don't know why, I don't know if they changed the process or what, but.
They wanna be.
But we passed our, our air quality test, so we thought all that's done is complete, just our final process will be there.
Ratify as presented? Sorry. I'll leave a motion, a second, stand.
Mr. Chairman, what is, what air curtain and incinerator and lamps are located, and what is the property below, located on, so?
It's located at the ramparts where we borrow our debris from, from our terminal, the lamps.
And who is, who is permitting that, who is?
Yes.
Lord God.
And we have to pay permit fees? They spent a hundred dollars.
That's why I said, when we done the, uh, what you call it, for the permit waivers, that it was a good deal, because Lea County has a bunch of them, so it's all the different, the governments.
And we have the manual provided to us, so I, I can probably operate the, the thing now, I know I have a big room and everything, it's all, sorry, your promise. Thank you for the information, so, uh, a motion, a second, to ratify, uh, the permit? Is there further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries?
Yeah, I can see that one.
Now my stack up, yeah, no, my stack.
Now, now they're spending money.
Yeah, I'd like to spend some money, please. Um, we're requesting to purchase a nineteen ninety-three Grado six sixty B for eighteen thousand five hundred from a private individual. Now, you remember, we had requested, we talked about renting a Grado to, you know, work in our flooded areas, and that was an estimated twenty-three thousand just for the rental for three months. So we're looking at those savings, of course, if we purchase it for eighteen thousand five hundred, and own it, and it runs.
I'm gonna ask this question. I, uh, I don't see, uh, Kelly or Jesse or any Charlie or Frank.
Casey's here, Casey showed up.
I do see Casey, there you go, Casey, did you, you go?
We actually went by there, we had it checked out, uh, through our, uh, shop, uh, Charlie was out there, he checked it out, lady checked it out. Uh, Alan Cannon actually had an opportunity to run it, he said the, uh, actual controls were tight, you know, that was kinda, you know, surprising to him, but he said they were very tight. Motor cranked up real quick, uh, front engine, rear engine to the Grado itself, fire dried up, uh, as far as the piece of equipment, I know it sounds like it's an older piece of equipment, there's a minor issues with it, but overall, it looks like a great deal.
And for, for a few dollars, you can fix the, the whole thing, the cylinder, so you're back in operation.
Yes, sir.
Instantly?
No, 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 very, very, uh. That's wasting all.
It's a pain creating a problem.
I don't know. Wilbur, you went and checked it out as well?
Yes, sir.
You went with him.
Three cents.
We got some. Okay, can you take it?
Mr. Chairman, what does, I assume that this is a Grado, yes?
No, I mean, it's like a, it's like a truck that has a bucket on it that reaches out, uh, and scoops, you can clean out ditches and stuff with it, the state, the DOT has one, the state, you see, they use a lot. It's a lot more refined control, and you can remove, you know, the, the debris and the, and without cranking it into a hole, um.
How does that work again?
It kinda reaches out like this, and kinda, it kinda goes like this, actually, then it doesn't bend.
I quit doing that because I figured somebody was gonna say something.
So, but anyway, it's, it's a specialized piece of equipment, but we have a lot of use for it, we can use it from down where I need this, we can use it.
Now, do you have the money in your budget?
Yes, Dan, we do, and it's a savings actually compared to renting it.
Hey, is this the big one, one you're gonna lease?
No, actually, this is a bigger piece of equipment than the one that we got.
Yeah?
This is actually the viable one, the one that we were gonna lease, that had to be, uh, called on the little one.
We can tag it, take it on the road and drive it.
And it'd be used for other projects besides this one project.
Yes, we actually have another project lined up, Fort Lourdes, I'm in.
I'm in all those.
District four.
Two.
We don't have a project, we're on high price.
Yeah, you're saying, you know.
Kind of, you're, you're lucky.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rooks, a second.
May.
Commissioner Joiner, um, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries, uh, I will add, I think in ninety-three, I think this is actually older than the one the state has, so that they've used for many years. Good job, whoever found that.
That was a good one. Thank you, Miss Alice.
How easy that was?
Easy peasy.
Do we, do we go back to, to planning now, or do we just keep our weight?
Yeah, I'll wait.
No, come on.
I need a second to, just, uh.
Set up, okay. Well, we've already spoke with the sheriff, uh, but I recognize McCann as being here, thank you for being here, sir, anything else you need to add to your earlier comments?
Well, sir, just, uh, blessed Christmas and New Year to you all and all our citizens.
We have Miss Merritt, uh, from the town of English, do you have any, any good word from the town of English?
We're still there. Uh, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Enjoy your parade tonight, by the way.
Very nice parade.
And thank you for showing up, we really appreciate the fact that, that you guys came down.
I even got to see Elvis. Shouldn't have been eating them kids' candy. Why don't we have this long, would y'all like me to do a little Jason Olding? Like children?
There you go.
I think Sheriff threw you on the floor. Yeah, he did, didn't he?
I think that's why he's mentioning those names, trying to make himself seem more contemporary.
That's right.
He has the early signs of something, oh.
Well, my head is almost crushed, man. Okay, were you says?
No.
Okay, okay. Says he raised school, just turned you on to ask permission to leave. I knew that it was gonna already be done.
I don't know, but I'm about half home, girl, I'm more than half here.
All right, I hope you got it.
Y'all better start, you know, eating breakfast.
Right, did you not eat breakfast, Mr. Lawrence?
Ma'am.
Did you not eat breakfast this morning?
Well, ma'am, I drink apple juice for breakfast, but I'm not on breakfast day.
We're glad you don't drink apple juice all the time.
Where'd you go for it?
She didn't catch the humor much, dude, sometimes I'm just screaming.
Picture Lake County with a bunch of blue, red.
Yeah, it's not a.
It's got a lot of suckers off of it.
Now, you have all these maps in your packet, so you need to see anything, your closer details in your information packet.
And you do shoes too, so, yeah.
Okay, the church is back, we're talking about stuff, that's what we're talking about. No? Well, who's talking about you?
Oh, yeah, well, 'cause we're in recess.
When I was in school recess, I was, well, I got my best grade.
Anyways, I'm. To go forward. I'm gonna make this real quick, and if you have any questions, feel free to add, and, um, purposeful presentations, just to give you all information and give you an update on, um, the process of updating the comp plan, as you all knew, back in November, we authorized staff to send a letter to the state saying we're going to, our intention is to update your comp plan. Every seven years is required in all the counties and cities in the state of Florida that have comp plans, where they all have that comp plan, so we have to update it. So, I just wanted to give you guys a brief overview of where we are in the update process, and, um, some of the data that we gathered and analysis that we've done through using Matthew G I S. and, um, some of the data that we gathered and analysis that we've done through using mapping and GIS and just giving an overview of the process itself. So, there's been a lot of changes in laws since two thousand eight, and that's the last time we had a plan update. Um, so part of the update process of updating the comp plan is gonna be, we're gonna have to respond to, um, changes in statutes because there's been a lot of little changes and big changes, uh, since two thousand eight. So, um, as you know, um, for comp plan, it still requires, so it... This is kind of basic, but you all know what the comp plan is. It's actually just a legal, um, basis for doing planning and growth management in the county. And it's a document that consists of twelve, you'll, you'll have twelve elements in the comp plan. Um, and in those elements are goals, objectives, and policies, and those are, um, the vision of the counties, where you wanna guide growth and how you wanna see the counties develop, and things you wanna retain, things you don't wanna retain. Um, and it's kind of your blueprint on how you wanna be, how the county wants to go. Um, part of your process that we do, and, uh, it's been streamlined, and a lot of growth management's been streamlined at the state level. And they sort of, um, take the claws and the teeth out of what their, um, role is in comprehensive planning. They put it more in the, in the lap of local government to determine what is they want, don't wanna do. It's more in your hands now. Um, the unofficial word at the state level is pretty, pretty much not saying no than much. Um, some things they are, it's not entirely true, but on the average, they withdrawn from that process of overlooking local government decisions. It's kind of more in your own style now, so... But I'll get to those changes. Anyways, my next slide. Okay, yeah, here, I guess we're on another slide. Uh, the evaluation appraisal process itself, um, maybe we'll just update you as you all, some of you all have been here a while, and you'll know what that's about. Last time we updated was in two thousand eight. Uh, the last time your future land use map was updated was probably around two thousand five. And that came on board about two thousand seven. Um, since then, we're gonna have to tweak the land use map and bring it up to current situation and amendments and things that have happened in the county. Uh, we'll also tweak the land, uh, future land use map based on some of the analysis that staff has done and it can come to you and show you what's been going on as far as changing conditions. Because part of the update of the plan is the two basic things are to respond to changes in local conditions and then just to bring the goals and objectives and policies into compliance with state requirements. So that's when we send you the policies that strikes through and underlines they're gonna be based on what the statute is. And unless you have any other things you wanna add to it, then we'll, of course, respond to that and update it as, as you obviously fit. Um, then the last thing that happens is this, um, update to the plan will go to the state, the Department of Economic Opportunity. It used to be Department of Community Affairs, so now that's, they're gonna oversee that. Your, um, drop, last deadline to transmit all the adopted, the whole plan adoption that your update is gonna be December first, um, twenty sixteen. So we have about a year before we have to get everything up there and gone, um, and approved by the state. As far as doing the updating process, we're almost in the final stage of that, say, collecting all the data and doing some of the analysis. We feel a little bit less to do because it's based on feedback from the board and the planning commission. Most of the GIS mapping was completed, as you know, last summer. We got a, a technical assistance grant from the state. We worked with the planning council and updated the future land use map, and it was significant because we, we now have the actual shape files, which is the data that's used to, to make the map. And then we can manipulate the data and use that and make analysis and stuff. Before, we just had like a PDF snapshot of the map. You can't manipulate that. You can't ask questions of it. And now we have the actual raw data that we can link up with other information and actually ask questions and do analysis. So that's a great thing that I think for planning, that you can do that. And that goes across to anything. There's a lot of things that GIS can be applied to, a lot of different departments. Anyway, but just for planning, that's, that was a great, uh, thing to have. So like I said, most of the GIS mapping was done with the grant with Lakouchi. Um, we came back behind them and actually verified a lot of the stuff that's done, like city boundaries and actual land use changes and things. A lot of tweaking that we've been painstakingly doing. And then some of the analysis required a lot of, uh, data to be put into the GIS that we could get some information, which I'll show you. So, um, the first thing we did in December seventh, we, the, uh, planning it with the board, county committee, or for the planning commission. And we gave them this, what I'm gonna get ready to give you. We gave them an overview of the changes and, uh, some of the analysis and data we collected and some of the new mapping. And we asked for some feedback, um, and, and with specifically, we asked for a couple of recommendations that they could make to you all, to the board, county commissioners, so we could direct staff in which way to go, and a couple of key, key issues that came up with the changes in the statute. Because there's a lot of changes and certain things are optional now, certain things you have to do. But we need feedback from the board on, um, things that are optional, whether you want to continue doing certain things or not continue doing them. But I'll get to that in a minute. Next slide. Um, while I talk about tweaking the land use map, um, and updating, those are two major things that'll need to be done. And updating those goals and objectives and policies. Um, so I said, we'll take all these changes, uh, plan, here, the plan is kind of in a timeline. So take these changes and amendments and map tweaking to the, to the, um, planning commission, and they need the first of each month. And then at the end of each month, we'll report that to you on an informational basis. What the, what the planning commission has seen, what they decided, and then you all can, if you wanna add anything to it, to staff or just to keep you informed what's going on. But the final, the way it has to go is that we have to take to you all the changes in one packet at the end, and we'll get to see it. And then update, and then give your transmittal, adopt, adopt, transmit, the documents to the state, so...
Well, rather than give us one huge document to digest all the ones you're gonna give us in a month.
We're gonna keep you updated and then, yeah, so you don't have to, like, do it all at once, right? And, um, but you won't be adopting something after the board, as the planning commission said in the beginning, they're not, they're not gonna go see it and do an adoption. It's gonna be all at once, but we'll still get to see it, so... And like I said, those changes are due no later than December first, when you transmit it to the state, so... The comprehensive plan, this could be a whole presentation itself on just the changes and legislative changes. I don't wanna, um, you know, overwhelm you with all these different statutes and changes. But basically, um, the comprehensive plan process with the state, the legislative data changes. They streamlined a, a lot of the review process. They took a lot of people, a lot of agencies that were adding comments in the past. There are no longer allowed to comment unless it's on a, a critical or state concern. Um, their turnaround time has been quicker. When we send things up there, we get a faster response, um, less, it's just moved out the process and streamlined it. Um, they did a lot of, lot of little tiny changes. The main thing they did is they took, um, chapter nine J five before a mandatory code, and they put it into chapter one sixty-three. And that's, um, where a lot of the requirements for comprehensive planning is. That nine J five used to be the minimum criteria for, um, amended comp plans and, you know, plan amendments to the map and, um, review the comp plan and land development regulations and all that. So they put a lot of stuff into nine J, nine J five, they put a lot of it in one sixty-three, so you still got that going on a little bit. Um, they freed up, it used to be only two cycles a year. You could do large scales. Now you can do it as many as you want. Um, they increased the threshold triggers for development of regional impact and those, you know, um... So now you can actually do more without it being considered a development of regional impact, whether it's X amount of commercial space or X amount of water extracted gallons per day for money, or however you want it to be. There's, there's thresholds on that, and once this, a proposed development hits that threshold, it's triggered into a BRI. But they raised those, so, um, I guess more can be done through that process. Um, the one other main key change is on concurrency. It's now, it's optional to do transportation, um, parks and rep, and public schools. So those three are now optional. They used to be required. You don't have to do them, or you can keep doing it. It's up to the board, and I'll probably, I'll need feedback on you all on what direction you wanna go with that. Now, sand, ferry, sewer, solid waste, potable water, and, um, drains, those are still required. And they're in our capital improvement element. We have Dr. Bell service for those.
Shelly?
Yeah.
Is there a recommendation from the planning council, planning commissioner?
To keep it, yeah. To keep it in place. Can you raise them? And then the next one, um... And then, um, also a data collection, um, we're not gonna show you, but it's just an overview of how we use GIS to show some of the changing, changing conditions. But we looked at city boundary, we verified that. We can show areas of new development, which is this map in front of you. Um, the dots are actually building permits that were issued from the building department. I've been collecting notes from the building department since two thousand seven, since that started. So we put that in as Excel and put it in the GIS, and now we can show where, um, new, new developments occurring. Not like if they tore down a home and put it, it's one back in its place, or a new mobile home. This is actually where growth is occurring in the county. So you kind of see from all, a whole bunch of data, you can look at it on a mapping display, and those maps are in your, um, packet as well. So, um, we need to look at the municipal service districts, which are, of course, land use designation categories. So, um, a lot of cities have grown outside of their districts. Of course, they don't dictate how a city grows. A city's gonna annex and grow however it does. But MSDs is, if you're gonna be in compliance with the comp plan, it should be outside the city and not within the city. So we'll have to tweak some of those things, so... Population, we looked at population projections, but there, I don't know if you can really see them. I think I had them in your packet, but, um, like the census was done in twenty-ten, and that was an actual count that was taken. So every ten years, the government counts population in every county, city. Um, right now, we're, we started in twenty-ten, I think it was forty thousand eight hundred and one. Then twenty-fourteen, estimate went down to thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirteen, and now it's back up to forty thousand eight hundred. And these are all estimates. Anything past twenty-ten is gonna be an estimate. Beaver at University of Florida spits out these new population estimates every year on April first. So it's always gonna change, but this is our, so twenty-twenty-five will be like our ten-year plan horizon. When we do the update, that's how we're looking that far ahead. So we just kind of base, we're gonna need to know the population projections to know how to allocate landings and, you know, just the overall general plan in, in general. So that we take the mid-range, the medium estimation. We don't do the high and low. We take the middle estimation. And that's approved by, you know, the state wants to, us to use that estimation. So it's almost a ten percent increase over that, but I just wanted to put that in there. And like I was saying, on this map you all are looking at, between two thousand six and twenty-fifteen, the building department issued that seven hundred and forty-three permits for new home constructions or actual site-built homes, and eight hundred and sixty-seven for mobile homes. And we can see, I think you can see on the map how, where that's showing up. Um, that map there has, actually, that's not land use map. It's just a regular map from analysis. It's got, um, GIS. It can show you the actual boundaries of the city. I think those are in gray, and then the green is the areas of annex. And you can kind of see where the cities have annexed and where the growth is occurring outside MSDs. And, and then overlay the population, the, um, development, new development over top of that, just to get an idea to see, uh, what's going on in the county. Because we're gonna have to write an executive type of summary to the state and kind of get the picture with this year update of what's been going on in the county. So we're gonna use all this analysis to do, to do that sort of thing. Um, just in annexations alone, since two thousand eight, there's a list of all the, um, the acreage, the land use categories we lost through the, um, oops, sorry, through the, um, annexations. I'm just totally lost now. Um, anyways, a whole and massive issue. There, it's the end of the presentation.
That was great.
Is that great? Let me go back. Okay, so anyway, so we lost about fifteen hundred acres, a little more. Uh, when, when cities, I mean, when cities annex, they actually, um, beat up incorporated population and households, and they beat up acres and landings for the town. So, uh, we'll look at all that when we look at updating the map and which way we wanna go. And then, um, MSDs, like I said, um, we've outgrown them, our city boundaries. There was talk in the, in your planning commission meeting, they were looking at, um, the areas, like say, around Sheeport's annex and where the proposed hospital is going. They, they had suggested something about looking at maybe extending the MSD line a little further west to accommodate for the, the hospital and what's going on in there. I think all that land in that area is, you're one for ten acres, rural agricultural, rural residential, kind of land that that would be. There's some kind of suggestions that they're gonna make, or they, they have made. Um, as you know, MSDs can carry higher densities and intensities of uses. Um, we look at, uh, cooked up with the property crisis data, we can see, um, we can even look at building footprints and how much, because they, buildings are packed, size, square footage. And we can see how much square footage, uh, industrial, commercial in these MSDs, um, which I'll show you. That chart, I think, is in your packet as well. And, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that Dave Pickle, like, really loves, but, um, we, I'll be sending him this again, but, I mean, just for, this is just an example of the kind of data we have in GIS. We can see how many acres that we have developed in, in commercial and how many undeveloped in commercial and industrial. Um, the square footage of the building is in there. We can, we can kind of see, so when we start thinking about, do we wanna put more commercial in this MSD or where do we put the land based on the population, um, we wanna look at these things and give you a snapshot of what it looks like and what's going on. Because some, like, I think Bronson has absolutely no vacant industrial commercial, but other cities do, but like, said, that, uh, Wilson and Sheeport, respectively, they have the highest square footage on that.
I don't remember if you have any condition from Bronson.
Might not. Well, outside of Bronson, you're talking about MSD. So there, okay, there's the picture of Wilson, see how it's growing outside of its MSD. That, the one on the left is just the GIS map and, uh, doing, just looking at the city boundaries and the MSD and the growth. And then the one on the right would be like your land use map, and you'd see how, well, the MSDs represented it in the, in the dark map on the right as like little patches. But you'd wanna wrap the, um, MSD at least around the cities to make it in compliance with the comp plan. And, um, a lot of things, you know, you can get into it, but we won't get into a lot of the stuff right now. Um, that and analysis, plan on just reviewing this stuff and taking it back to the planning commission. We did it in December seventh, like I said. They reviewed the MSD boundaries and mapping. They recommended in a nutshell to keep concurrency for those three services, transportation, parks, and schools. Um, another little change in the statute was on your capital improvement element. We have a five-year, uh, program of capital pro, yeah, cap, project improvements, on a five-year schedule of improvements. Used to be, the first three years, we had to show, the county had to show identified funding source for those three projects. The state dropped that requirement, and the planning commission recommended just go ahead and go with that and don't require it because it's good if you have these projects in the comp plan. A lot of times when you go for grants for other departments, they act as in the comp plan, and you go, oh, yeah, it's in the comp plan, and so that's a good thing to have. Uh, then we were talking about the MSD, Sheeport boundaries, which I told you all, they had recommended looking at moving that MSD a little further west, just in that area, not the whole MSD, but just in that area. So, um, so like I said in the beginning, when I go to the planning commission, we'll just bring whatever changes and analysis to them and any kind of map changes. Um, I've done some updates to the elements based on the statute changes, but they're kind of no brainers. They're just like, let's get it into compliance with the state requirements. There's nothing that needs to be decided. It's kind of like, you have to do them. Um, and I'll be bringing those at each month as I can to them, and then I'll give you guys an update on it. And, um, look at the maps, and then just, that's how it was perceived, just like that, so I'm gonna read real quick and...
Ms. Cannon?
Please, essentially, go to slide number seven.
What? I can't even remember. No, I will try. Number seven? Okay.
Click on that arrow there.
I'm trying, I'm trying. It's good, it is. Seven, yeah. Okay.
Okay, move along. In case threshold triggers for development of regional impact?
Yes.
No. And what are the threshold triggers?
Oh, there, there's a bunch. It's just like water and commercial square footage and...
How many people, the size of the development?
I'm asking that this regards to fracking.
Fracking?
They have a bill in the state, Miss Annie may be able to tell us. I don't know if they have ruled on the, the legislation to allow fracking to, what's the oil exploration, uh, thing? That's the one, which has caused earthquakes in Oklahoma regularly and other states and other very bad consequences as regards water quality. And that's why I'm asking this question. Has that been ruled on by the state? Would we know, isn't that the section hasn't been convened yet?
Yes.
And it's, it's, there's two proposals in committee. One of them is to put a moratorium on fracking for five years, and the other one is to, to basically allow... One of them is to put a moratorium on fracking for five years, and the other one is to, to basically allow fracking to continue. What we're doing through the association of counties is we are asking if the legislature does not put a moratorium on fracking, that they give the control at the local level, so that we decide whether or not we allow fracking.
See, that is what their effort can take it away from the law.
And, and the effort to the association of counties, which actually came up in my committee, is to, to keep home rule and not allow them to preempt our decision making. So, but to make, if it makes you feel any better, fracking is not an option for us at all.
Well, I understand that, but the government.
But it, but it is in other counties, and that's, and that's kind of the, that's kind of where I had a little heartburn with the issue is, is, you know, it, it may be, it may be all right for one community, it may not be all right for the other, for the next, but, you know, it's not the state's right to be able to tell us what to do, I don't think.
But the state is saying, I'm bigger than you.
Yes. Well, they want the tanks, but anyway, but that's where we're at with fracking. Any questions for Shelly? Thank you, Shelly.
Thank you. You all want to come to what you want to do? Appreciate it.
Nice, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, moving on, we have now reached our second public comment section. Does anybody here would like to participate in public comments? Ms. Sally Ann.
I just have one comment, it's not super important, except for the fact that Mike and Kay Gator both had succumbed to pneumonia and have started to rally, they have a little more medication to take. They wanted to wish you all a Merry Christmas, and hope to be back at the next meeting.
Keeping in our prayers. Right. Extend Merry Christmas back to us today. All right, Commissioner Ford's, Commissioner Jordan.
I would, Commissioner, to come in over the top of the, I pray in anger, I join very much, very good praise. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, happy New Year. About anything.
Commissioner Ross.
Wishing everybody the best, wonderful, blessed Christmas holiday.
Commissioner Stevens? God at the church turned out very well, if I remember right, it was five hundred and thirty-five people out there in the country. Didn't make it, please plan on the, thank, uh, somebody told me it was like, saying pneumonia on Saturday night, on the back house.
It was. If you missed it, you missed the blessing.
Commissioner Meeks.
Parade in Sheepland, it started at six o'clock, not four o'clock, went very well. Parade lights, it was a success, lots of people came out. Thank you, Commissioner Knowles, for the ride. Kirby Farm, they're still doing their deal there, there's a few more nights, I think. If anybody hadn't been out to Kirby Farm.
I don't have a problem, I think they're actually going to run through the video.
Are they?
They're going to run Mass Christmas.
Okay, good. And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and wish you stay, and remember the reason for the season.
I don't know, praying in Cedar Key, it's very, very good, a lot of people there. I think it was good too.
Good deal. Update on Rees Across America, that was a huge success. I want to thank both newspapers for writing the article, both the Journal and the Citizen, ran the article, submitted, I believe, by Ms. Anna Elkins. We had enough Rees to do Rosemary Hills Cemetery, the Jim Milton Cemetery in Bronson, as well as the Elzy Cemetery down in Elzy, but you'll probably call it a Rees, but anyway.
One other thing, Mr. Jerry, I forgot to mention, the Gypsies are back. I think they work another day, y'all please remind all these ugly people, watch out for them. And when you see them in the driveway, I don't know what to tell you to do, I know what, I know what to do, but I can't tell you what to do.
Call the police.
There you go. Call the police, or.
Yeah. We have a letter here from Mr. Jack Hudson, District Commander, from the Anvets District 16, thanking us as the board, on behalf of the Anvets, for approving the donation of the bus. They've already been able to put their bus to good use transporting members on visits to the Viti Hospital in Gainesville, and to visit their comrades at other district functions. So, that's a nice thank you letter from Mr. Jack for the bus. And then the final thing I have today is kind of an update on the Restore Act. We had a meeting back in November. Ms. Cannon, can I move this now?
I will move it, I'll do it.
We had a Gulf Consortium meeting in December, in January, November. And at that time, we were talking about the pot three money, the state expenditure plan. And it was kind of heated, to say the least. There were some people who didn't, who thought we need to have a plan, and then we need to talk about money, and then there were some of us, like myself and some other small county governments, that felt we need to talk about the money, and then talk about the plan, so that we knew what we had to work with. If you were going to start a project, building a house, you wouldn't go buy the material for the house, and then decide where you're going to get the money from, I mean, so. Some very interesting issues came about, and I have this little paper, this little handout, if y'all want to kind of follow along. There was, you know, there's, the counties, the eight disproportionately affected counties in the Panhandle. Those are the ones that the government, state for, the federal government has all, has all recognized as being the areas, that there's actually product on the beach, that they were directly affected by the oil spill. Then there was the other 15 counties, which we are, point out, that there wasn't necessarily product on the beach, but we were affected because of tourism downturns, because of downturns in purchase of seafood, and just economic impact on us. So unfortunately, it kind of put us in a, in a scenario where there was the eight against the 15, especially when it come down to decide how the money was distributed. And if you look on the back page, there's a comparison of how the funding was distributed between the eight and the 15. You can see the eight up here, this green column is the Triumph Gulf Coast money. You can see they received all of that, and we received none of that. So whenever it come time for the pot three distribution, I felt it was prudent for me, for myself, and some other leaders in the non-15, in the 15, to speak up. And what we had was a proposal originally proposed by Commissioner, no, the one from the Panhandle, not Warren, uh, Robert Robinson. He decided that we needed to break up into water sheds, and that would be the best way to do it. And we would take the $280 million and distribute it evenly amongst the 10 water sheds. Well, whenever that proposal was presented to us, looked something like this, it was all fine and good, until you get to Jefferson County, and they grouped Jefferson, Taylor, Dixie, and Levy in one group, and they grouped Citrus, Hernando, and Pasco in one group. All other water sheds only had two counties. So therefore, they would have split $28 million two ways, we would have split four ways, the counties to the suburbs would have split three ways. I threw a fit and proposed that that was not very fair, and that that needed to be rescinded. And so what we came down to, my motion was that we just, you know, all be good neighbors, and we split the money evenly, Stephen. All 23 counties get the same portion of the $280 million. The argument can be made that the, the eight disproportionately affected got a lion's share of the money, but the argument can be made that they deserved the money. At the end of the day, anything more than, than a dollar was more than, than what we thought we had coming. So I am proud to announce to the constituents of Levy County that we were looking at worst-case scenario, $5,568,000, well, actually, worst case, yeah, well, that would, and then, or $7 million, but me along with some help from some other small counties in the region, championing the proposal that will land Levy County $12,434,783 to be used for projects to restore the Gulf Coast here in Levy County. This is, of course, pending approval by the governor, but according to yours, that is available as soon as they hung up the money. We're going to begin to operate off that. This is pot three money, so.
So that's not restraining to, um, where.
As of yet, it's not.
And just that's still limited to the 15-year plan, have to pay back?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what it is.
I don't, that's not what we discussed, so.
But I know that it's still subject to the consent.
Yes.
I'm not sure whether pot three was also the pot one, but I take it back, this is.
It is, okay, well.
Because it was all of the Restore Act money, Clean Water Act money, so that would be subject to the, if that's what's finally.
And who does the pony?
The folks at VP Transocean and whoever.
Halber.
Halber. Let, let's make, I want to make something clear, though, before we get all excited. This is pending approval by the governor, which it should be approved, that's why we have hired a consulting group to make sure we have a good plan. And similarly, this money is not, you know, it's not going to go into our general fund, it's not just direct money to us. It's a component of money to be held in the treasury, and as we approve projects, we can draw down on this money. But I felt that that was a tremendous win for the, for the, for the small counties, as well as for our, our county here in Levy County, because Jefferson, Taylor, Dixie, and Levy were going to take a whipping, and I knew that was coming. And so I went, prepare, I'm not bragging on myself, but I just want y'all to know. But I ain't just wasting my time and my money around these meetings, I actually bring something back.
Mr. Chairman, don't you have that permission, where you can spend it on, on front, that chair of process? Don't you have to have to go forward that commission?
But it's our money, they can take it away.
I understand. Now, thank you, 10-year time you got to spend then, or.
Well, according to Ms. Annie, it's going to be over this 15 years, but this morning, I was not aware of that.
This morning on TV 20, they were saying 17-year payout, where that come from, I don't know. But they mentioned Levy and Dixie, but they didn't mention any amounts, they didn't quote anybody. They were just reading an article, but they were talking in 17, 17-year payout, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we have to have a plan, a totally plan for the whole state, and then you bring your plan, your projects to the state. That's where we're at with that, so, thank y'all. All right, the mayor motion to pay the bills. We have a motion to pay the bills, and for the discussion, all in favor, should the public say aye?
One big thing is the bills is this is the time that you pay the CRA, City of Cedar Key gets $472,000, City of Wilson gets $105,000, so if that's a big part of the bills, so they would, they would be looking for that check.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Uh, the mayor a motion to pay, or to approve the metes, as approved.
I'll make a vote to approve.
I did have a question about what special board meeting was, we have on the 14th September. Will we approve those metes at, at these, these locations? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody else who has any business needs come before this board today? Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Sherman, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak, and possibly loving our, and I hope you like.
Thank you, y'all.
The way of saying.
Yes, ma'am.
To which she is entitled, and thank you again, and I wish all of you a healthy, bright Christmas.
Yes, ma'am. And everybody have a safe New Year. See you about January 5th.